Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. It's now 6:00. It's time for our regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight I'm going to offer an indication in place. I'd ask you to stand. And to start off, I'd just like for us to take a moment of silence in observance of the two officers in Gilchrist County that were tragically gunned down, I believe it was last week or the week before. The Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together tonight. The Lord, we ask that you just give us the strength and the wisdom to conduct the business of the county. The Lord, we ask that you be with our first responders, our military, and anyone that stands in the gap to do the business of the people. The Lord, we ask that you forgive us our sins and give us strength and the wisdom. In your name we pray. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twice I've done that. All right. First order of business, approval of minutes, April 17, 2018, for the scheduled board meeting. Any changes or corrections? Hear none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent, I've got items 2 through 13. Is there anything that needs to be pulled for discussion? Hear none. Do I have a motion approved, 2 through 13?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to staff reports, item, excuse me. Moving on to county attorney items. I'm going to take item 15 first. The ADA/504 transition plan has been pulled for a different meeting. For the night, we'll have discussion and consideration of adoption of LEP plan. County Attorney Jimmy for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, this is part of the requirements we have in the SCAP program for FDOT. They go through an annual, not annual, a tri-annual audit of all of the different requirements you have if you're being able to receive federal funds. And ours came up for review this year, and we started into the program, and we made some additional changes. And Ms. Pennington did a good job of getting the part in with the ADA 504 transition plan. But with the transition plan, it didn't have everything that we needed because they were expanding the requirements there. So, we got contacted DOT, and we got a six-month extension to be able to address the ADA plan. Mr. Marcus and I will have to do some surveying of other items that are out there to create a plan to say how we're going to fix sidewalks that we don't have. But we have to be creative about it, so we have to go through a little machinations before we get there six months from now. Turning to the LEP plan, the LEP plan is the Limited English Proficiency Plan. Basically, what we've done through the county and with the different departments is we have different staff members that speak Spanish, or we call the sheriff's office to speak Spanish, and we go through. But what they've required now is to expand it. You have to do a survey of what the actual population is. I went back and I used the census data tables S1601 to be able to come up with what our census data was under the program to start with. There are four factors that you have to go through. One is to find the number of all, and the proportion of people that are LEP people, or frequency within which we have contact with them, the nature and importance of the service, and the resources and overall cost to us. Basically, what we can come down to is we have 9.2% LEP persons in the county, of which total population, 7.4% speak Spanish, 1.0% speak Indo-European languages, and then 0.05% speak Asian Pacific. So, that's, so we identified the languages that we need to deal with. The frequency with which we come and contact them and survey in the county departments is rare, and the real ones that comes in contact with them are the fire and EMS program. And so, that's what we concentrated on in our plan here, is how to deal with them at fire and EMS. And fortunately for us, fire and EMS is already dealing with them very proficiently because they have two programs that they utilize, which is Language Line and ESO Easy Speak, which allows people to speak into it, and then it speaks back to them and translates it from whatever language it is for them to be able to help them, you know, with the services. There's also available what I'm going to call, for this lack of better words, there's cards that you point at. If your heart is hurting, you point at the picture on there, you know, that type of thing to be able to do that. So, when we talk about resources available, those are two programs that we have, and we're utilizing the other proficiency cards, language proficiency cards. So, we're really complying with what we need to do. And so, what I've done here is explain this in just this document that puts it in the format that they prefer, and I would like for you to be able to adopt this plan tonight as our Swanee County Limited English Proficiency Plan.
All right. Any questions for the attorney? Do I have a motion to adopt the plan?
Move to adopt it.
Got a motion to adopt the plan by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion?
I do have one thing. How often will we have to revisit this and update this?
Every three years.
Every three years.
Actually, it'd be reviewed every three years. Whether we have to update it will be up to their discretion.
Okay. Any further questions? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving up to item 14, discussion of state and national opioid litigation and alternatives for participation, if any. County Attorney Jimmy for that.
Gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody has acknowledged that there's an opioid crisis in America today. You cannot open a newspaper or listen to a media report about, without somebody talking about it. It has just become absolutely front and center in all the news media and as an issue around the country. There is, there is a current state of crisis in the state of Florida with regard to opioid use. Opioid-related deaths in Florida increased year after year from 2006 all the way to 2016, which is the last date that they have information available. And according to that last information, there were 5,275 opioid-related deaths in 2016 in Florida. And that's 14 opioid deaths every day. Swanee County even had four opioid deaths during that period of time. But let me tell you, what struck me about this is there's even other unseen problems that affect our Florida youth and our young people here today. That more than 4,000 babies were born addicted to opioids in Florida last year. That's more than 1,000 a decade ago. Substance abuse in the court system has played a role in 2/3 of the cases where children were removed from their homes. There's been a 38% increase in the number of children under the age of five who have been removed from homes in just the last year because of opioid abuse or substance abuse. And that, just the cost of opioid abuse to the taxpayers of the state of Florida, was $1.2 billion, and that's 5% of the total health care costs in the state last year. Therefore, I spoke to the chairman, and we thought we needed to address this crisis here locally. Quite frankly, when you look at the opioid crisis that you have, you know, how do you go about starting with this? Well, opioids are plain painkillers. They block pathways for neurological function to the brain, and historically, everybody knows that you hear about it, opioids are addictive. But what these opioids have traditionally been used for is for things that have been for acute post-operative pain, like today, except I didn't get to have any, or cancer and end-of-life care. Those are the types of things that they traditionally have been used for. But here is what the real problem has been, is that the manufacturers have overstated the benefits of what these opioids have done and what their benefits are for long-term care. They've promoted the use of these opioids for things that are not acute care or for post-operative pain. They've gone to where they're just treating common ailments with it over an extended period of time and using it to treat chronic conditions that are not acute pain relief. And they've misrepresented this across the board, and that what they've actually done is by using doctors and sales representatives, they've created a kind of a society of this is what you move forward and be able to do. Why have they done this? Well, the manufacturer's conduct was designed for one thing, and that was to maximize profits, period. The next thing that's out there is, with the crisis, the manufacturers get down to where their distributors are. The distributors are statutorily obligated to report and maintain procedures to investigate in drug diversions. If somebody's out there and they're, you know, for the size of practice that they have, all of a sudden, they're expending or subscribing large numbers of opioids, their distributors report it, but they haven't. And that's created a problem. Why have they neglected their statutory duty? Again, one reason, profit, more profit. Now, so, what we would like to do is, for the past several months, the chairman and I have been investigating the litigation that's presently taking and ongoing nationwide. And quite frankly, we received several solicitations from nationwide firms that would like for us to get involved with them. We've also received several solicitations from attorneys that are within the state of Florida for us to join them. There are presently pending approximately 300 lawsuits nationwide regarding opioid litigation. Some are by individuals, some are by states, some are by counties and cities. The majority of the cases have been filed in federal court so that the plaintiffs could get jurisdiction over the big pharmacy players, like Purdue Pharma or Indo. Those are international players in the drug market. But when they file them in federal court, it's not here in your local community, it's all grouped in federal court, and what the manufacturers, they love this. They get to group it all together, and they get to put it all in one place, and that's called an MDL action. That MDL action is actually pending in the middle district up in Ohio, excuse me, the northern district in Ohio. The, how much say do you think you're going to have with anything that happens in the northern district of Ohio? But the manufacturers love it. It's easy for them to work with just one court, work with one settlement, and when they work inside the MDL, the people that are representing us in that community of the MDL would be lawyers that we don't even know. The judge actually appoints a committee of lawyers to represent everybody. They call it the liaison council, but they represent everybody. And what kind of input are we going to really get from there? Really not one, not much. A small community like us, just not going to happen. And I can tell you that from experience. I was involved in the MDL litigation that was with Chinese Drywall, and that MDL was pending in the eastern district of Louisiana. We had several folks that were involved in northern Florida up here, and we got to make one phone call to the liaison council over a five-year period of time, so you see how they were really, really concerned with us. They didn't care what our damages were for individual homes that suffered, and they ended up settling the case for a blanket across the board, and the smaller communities were really taken advantage of because we didn't have that representation. So, what I, well, the chairman and I have looked at is looking at a differing way or taking a different approach to the opioid litigation. And what we've done is spoken with some firms, particularly the firm that we have spoken with is Avrion Smith. Avrion Smith is a law firm out of Gainesville. Locally, you may know Rod Smith, he's one of the partners. Rod was, you know, in the Senate from here, and he was a state attorney down there for the Eighth Circuit for a long time, and Rod has a tremendous experience as a litigator. Even after he got out of the Senate and got back into private practice, he was involved in the tobacco litigation that was settled, not in the nationwide settlement because he took a different approach then, too, by representing some of the smaller entities to be, and individuals, to be able to go in and pursue cases on a local level. And what our idea in joining with them is, is that these cases would be pending and brought in Swanee County. It wouldn't be something that would be out there in federal court and going up to Ohio, but it would be pending here. Rod has put together, he and another part of the group of lawyers have put together a team that they will come in and they will look at the county individually. It is not something that's going to be taking up county time or resources. The law firm itself will provide the people to do and go through the records, be able to interview a limited number of people that we need to be able to give them the records that they need, but they will take on all of that burden, all of the costs of the litigation, the filing, going through the discovery with the big companies and everything. They will take all of that responsibility on a contingency fee basis. And the packet that I've provided you talks about the different structure that we could work with them on, but that structure is also negotiable. But like I said, there are just several key things, I think, are important to be able to deal with them, and one is that they're local. Two, that they don't want to go to that state court, I mean, to the federal court, they want to stay in state court so it can all be done right here. And believe me, having a case before Judge Fenna would be a lot easier than it would be having it before a judge in northern district of Ohio. So, looking, I mean, I've given you the packet there so that you could look at the differing causes of actions if you want to go through that, about how damages can be direct or indirect and how it affects y'all. But the key part about all this is, is that we are passionate about it and that we understand that it does affect our community. It doesn't affect not only just the individuals that are affected, but it affects the county in that, look at the health insurance costs that go up because of what happens and those things that have to be covered by other people. Look at the law enforcement efforts that have to be made to go out there because of this abuse that's happened. They know about this. They knew about this. And all of this is coming out in these 300 cases that are going across the country. Folks, it's, at this point, it's not a matter of whether there's going to be litigation and whether it's going to be huge litigation, and it's going to be, and it's going to be more than 300 cases. There is going to be thousands of these cases. So, when you want somebody that's going to be handling your matter, you want to have somebody that's going to be close by. If you have a question, it's somebody that you can call and you can be able to speak to them, because there is going to be a big settlement in these cases. In these cases, it'd be like the tobacco litigation. It'll be a huge number, and it'll sound so wonderful, but who's going to be watching out for our interest if we don't have somebody local to be able to promote for us and what we have? And to stay away from that MDL settlement to be able to direct our own settlement, you know, here in Florida. So, what I'm asking you to do is look at the, you know, the packet that we go through, it's more of the technical aspects of, you know, what we need to do. I'm asking you, the chairman and I, you know, are asking you to look at whether or not we want to be involved in this litigation, which I think you do. And then finally, we do need to select a lawyer, you know, to be able to do that, and after our review of several different things, we're representing, like to have, represent us the firm of Avrion Smith out of Gainesville. I am, you know, whatever questions you have, I'll do the best I can do at this point.
I do have, Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
You said there are currently four cases in Swanee County?
No, sir. There were four opioid deaths in Swanee County in 2016.
Okay. That's what I, excuse me, but that's what I should have said. But there are four deaths in Swanee County.
Yes, sir.
So, that let us know that it is already here, and you're saying to us that we need to select some attorneys or some firm to, that we can go to in order to get into this litigation. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
When they do these lawsuits like this, or class actions, whatever, is it, a lot of these are they per capita based?
Well, and that's what we're trying to avoid here. In the big MDL, you know, litigation, what they're going to end up doing, because there'll be communities like New York City, or the state of New York, or the state of California, the state of Florida, you know, will be involved, and they'll say, okay, well, here's what we are, and here's where you are in, but it'll have, but it'll have no real proportion to what our real costs are. And that's why I don't like those types, you know, of litigation, because it's not based in your real damages, reality of what your real damages are.
Well, like in northern Ohio, you know, there's a lot of rural communities up there that are really more devastated by the problem than some more urban, and if you break it down like that, they're not going to get less for what they really need.
That's correct. That's why their damages will be misproportioned.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson. Mr. Vat, what is the possibility, and you're the attorney, so I'm going to ask you, what is the possibility of, since there's litigation going on currently in federal court, a judge holding up any other litigation? I mean, you're talking about litigation that covers the state of, that potentially covers the state of Florida. Would that not be considered trying these people twice for the same, for the same coverages?
No, sir, not if you're not a plaintiff that's involved in that action. Class action, you know, in, an MDL action is, it sounds like a class action, but it's really not. These are individual lawsuits that have been filed, and what they have done is they've all been consolidated into one jurisdiction and one judge to hear them. We would remain our autonomy as a plaintiff in our jurisdiction. If you go into federal courts, all the federal courts then are just taking it and going, oh, we don't have to deal with that, we send it to Ohio. And that's what, how those things have been happening. And what we want to do is be able to provide a local defendant, and I say local, state of Florida, you know, our surrounding community here, that is a problematic player in these things, and I just call it a bad actor for whatever you want to do. I mean, you know, a doctor that has been oversubscribing and lost his license, there are some sales representatives that have been put in jail because of misrepresentation of stuff, some of the Medicare fraud folks that have happened with this, and so that we can keep it, you know, in local state court. And as long as we stay in state court, and we're the plaintiff in state court, they can't transfer us up there to, into federal court and then on to the MDL. Now, eventually, I'm not saying it won't happen 100%, that it won't happen, but eventually, you know, that issue will be addressed, and that's why we need the local people, you know, to do that.
Okay. Second question that I have is, you said these fees are contingency fees, are they, is that contingent upon winning?
Yes, sir.
Therefore, there's no cost.
If they do not, if they do not win the case, there are no attorney's fees, and there are, whatever costs that they expended, it's there, they have to eat them all.
How does that relate to the county? And this is, we want to represent the people in the county that have been affected, but how does that relate to what the county would receive versus what they would receive, and how would we get, you know?
Okay.
Help me understand.
A little bit of apples and oranges there. As for an individual that has the, a lawsuit for opioid abuse, the county would not be representing them. We're going back and forth. The county would not be representing that individual, okay? They may have their own personal injury action as a result of that, okay? As a result of the death caused by, you know, something else. What we are doing is, we're looking at what costs that death caused the county. You know, because that went, they had to go into the hospital, we had to provide services that we otherwise would not have, and we had EMS, had to go out there, fire and rescue, followed them up, you know, those are the types of costs that we're seeking to be able to recover. You know, and there's even future costs that would be, we need to have education programs for, you know, the community, you know, to keep them away from that, and those are the types of costs that we're talking about.
Thank you.
That was one of the questions that he asked, and a good answer, but also, how would the county keep tabs on the individuals that this opioid death is happening?
Those records are available. They're being compiled for 2017 right now. The report's just not out yet. So, I went back and looked at the information that was available for 2016, which is a full year that has been compliant, so we're kind of, you know, we've got a lag time because we've got to get through.
Seventeen. You don't have 17 yet.
Don't have 17 yet, but we know that it's on the increase.
We actually also pay indigent health care expenses that we're required to pay.
And they go up and up and up as a result of the, you know?
Most of the problem that I've seen on it has just simply been an issue with over-prescribing and undercharging, as far as I'm concerned. It's some of the opioids that you get are some of the least expensive drugs that you can purchase, and it's an interesting thing how the pharmacy will, or how the doctors will prescribe 30-day supply for, or the maximum allowable for an acute issue, especially when you're dealing with, it's like surgery or something like that. It looks like to me that Florida, it's Swanee County and Columbia County is coming down at the rate of prescriptions over the past several years. But that is, I guess it doesn't mean the cost is coming down.
Gentlemen, you will not be alone in looking at the ever firm, you know, going around here to date. They, or, they've got Columbia County, Levy County, Union County, Gilchrist County, I mean, this mean, this, Rod is, you know, representative from our area, and he's been a small-town guy, if you call Gainesville a small-town guy, you know? And he's a good lawyer, and the Avery firm are very good lawyers, and they've got the Krupnik firm down in Lauderdale that are assisting them. And those folks in Lauderdale, I dealt with them in the Ben Layte litigation back in the late 90s and early 2000s, and they are excellent lawyers. Now, the good part about somebody with them is they also have very deep pockets to be able to fund this litigation, because it is going to be expensive for all of the counties going around, as well as just for Swanee County to just pursue it on its own.
So that brings me, I was going to ask that question, if we had a local court here, obviously these guys have deep pockets, would this firm continue to represent us if it was taken to a higher court?
Absolutely.
Or somewhere else?
It'll be part of the, the contract.
Okay. Because, you know, they're not going to, they're not the kind that's just going to settle for a local ruling, and.
Nope.
Yeah.
Nope. It's part of their agreement.
And that fee is still based on that contingency, that if it goes to another court, they would?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions? What do you actually need from the board tonight, Jimmy?
Well, one, do we want to pursue this, period? I'd need to have a vote that we would like to pursue the opioid litigation, and then, in state court. That's why I would like for you to word it. And then, secondly, I'd like authorization for the chairman and I to nail down, you see the general details of the contract in the material there, but give the chairman and I, and coordinator, administrator, excuse me, the, you know, to let us be able to nail it down with them and move forward with this. Folks, it's going to happen, and this, you know, time is of the essence to be able to move forward, you know, with this litigation.
I mean, I definitely think it's something that we need to do. It's just a lot to take in it right here. I mean.
Well, it's been, I've been personally contacted by lawyers from Georgia that wanted us to get into their lawsuit, you know? They're trying to make it a multi-state deal. So it's coming, and we need to, we need to do something about it on our own.
I agree. I went over to Columbia County to watch the presentation that they had, and the attorneys there are the ones that, Mr. Smith, and they made a compelling case on why you'd want to be in it, and I tend to agree with them. I was hoping that the board would go ahead and give, give the go-ahead tonight to move forward with it, and if you're not comfortable with the contract, I guess we can work on that, but I was comfortable with it and would like to, like to move forward with it tonight.
One question, finalized, the, it sounds like it's, if we don't get into it, we don't gain anything with any litigation or with any settlements.
You don't.
And we're still going to be spending the money on dealing with opioid crisis in Swanee County. But if we do get into it, it's all coming out of the settlement, so it's no cost to the taxpayers, it's cost to the, it's basically, it looks like from the one slide, or from the one page you had, that the plaintiff's attorney receives the attorney's fees.
Directly, out of the settlement.
Okay.
It's a win-win situation for us, gentlemen.
I have no problem offering the motion.
We're not spending the money, but there is going to be litigation, and in my estimation, there will be a settlement, you know, to be able to go through all of this. But even if it's not a settlement, this group of lawyers are very, very capable lawyers, and can handle it from stem to stern.
I don't have a problem offering the motion. Second.
All right, got a motion. Made by Commissioner Richardson to pursue the opioid litigation in state court. That's the gist of your motion.
Just as stated. And it sounded like to me that it's still coming back here with the, your finalization of the contract or the agreement between the lawyers and the county.
Yes, sir, but I would like your authorization to pursue it with them, to get it down to the nitty-gritty, and then bring the contract back for y'all to then, you know, approve.
You want that as a separate motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, got a motion to.
Authorize us to negotiate.
Pursue the lawsuit in state court by Commissioner Richardson, and a second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. The second one would be a motion to give myself, the administrator, and the attorney negotiating powers to come up with a contract with, what was the firm?
Avery and Smith.
That's a move.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Sessions of a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to item 16, staff reports. Dr. Alvin Jackson, economic director.
Once again, it is another great evening in beautiful Swanee County. Just want to, from the TDC standpoint, want to encourage the board and the audience to like us on Facebook and Snapchat chat, and that's visitswanee.com. The TDC signature applications for the $10,000 grants and up will be available May 2nd, and the due date for those applications will be May 25th, by the end of the day, 5:00 p.m. Finally, the Pick 'n Save building is sold. Everyone around town has been asking about that. It's sold a week before last. We've been meeting with the owner. Basically, he's not the, necessarily the in-business user, but basically, we'll be investing in the building to get it up where we can actually market it, and get it filled with some type of industry. Today's the deadline for the incentive grants to do their annual report. It's due, it was due by 5:00, and those incentive grant holders have submitted their reports. Just quickly, you know, update, Klausner, basically, holding steady as 330 jobs, and they have about 600 trucks per day that actually frequent their facility. Just something that you should know. The other thing is, just like to, just reiterate, that remember the incentive program, the number-one criteria is that you have to pay your taxes, your avalum and your tangible taxes. And so, in Klausner, this would be their third year of submission, which means that they've been paying their taxes. I just want everyone to know, because there are some rumors out there that Klausner has not paid their taxes in three years, and that is not true. So I'd just like to correct that. Also, the Florida Power Light will be having a community meeting for their next solar plant, and that community meeting will be Tuesday, May 8th, 5:00 to 7:00, at Mount Olive Baptist Church. Basically, what they want to do is inform the public and the community about this solar plant, I think it's about 800 acres. They have actually met one-on-one with each one of the county commissioners, and given them an overview of that solar plant. But anyone that's interested, please attend, and Mr. Jim Bush had requested that the county commissioners, you want to come to that briefing, they would love to have you attend. Finally, we're gonna, I'm going to give the economic overview of Swanee County. I think it's very important for us to do this on a regular basis, because as the board is making public policy and making decisions such as the opioid issue, basically, I think some of our demographic characteristics and trends are important in those decision-making. The population, once again, is at 43,653, and this information actually comes from the American Community Survey data. So, these numbers and percentages that we share actually come from state and federal data sources, and we have the ability to collect all of those for Swanee County. The labor force here is about 17,889, with a participation rate of 50%, 50.6%. Of individuals, 25 to 64 in Swanee County, 11.3% have bachelor's degree or higher, which compares to about 31.8% in the nation. The median household income is 37,796, and the median house value is 88,700. And for those commissioners who have the document, I do have some extra documents for the public. On page three, I just want to, once again, highlight some of the areas I think that we need to continue to give attention to or celebrate. One is our poverty level is 23, is 22.7%, and in Florida is 16.1%, and in the nation is 15.1%. And I still say that that is a percentage that we need to pay close attention to and work to eliminate or to decrease. The household receiving food stamps is 23.4%, which is a direct correlation to the poverty level. In Florida is 14.8%, and in the U.S. 13%. On page four, our high school graduates, 39.7% compared to Florida, which is 28.3%. So this is a point of celebration, and even in the nation is 26.1%. So, really hats off to the school board, because that number is actually increasing, and it really will basically help our, what we call our workforce in the future. The other one on housing is renter-occupied housing units. It's about 30.4%. In Florida is 35.2%, and in the nation, 36.4%. Once again, as I've shared with the city of Live Oak, we look at the renter-occupied housing. However, we don't have multifamily units still for rent. Basically, what that does, it provides sustainable, affordable housing for the workforce, as well as it creates a tax revenue on the, for the avalum. Our social, children in single-parent families here in Swanee County is 42.4%, Florida 39.8%, and the U.S. 34%. Our employment trends are looking good, strong. Total employment was about, for this last quarter, about 13,119. Basically, employment has increased by 1.7%, and so there's a continuous growth of employment. Unemployment rate for Swanee is 3.9%. The rate was lower than the national rate of 4.4%, and basically, last year, it was 4.8%. So our unemployment rate has decreased. So, once again, that's a point of celebration. Wages, the average wages here is about 33,652. And just as a point of information, because this really speaks to the success that's happening with wages, I know four years ago it was at 26.7, and today it's 33,652. Basically, they have increased 3.3%. The annual average wages in the nation is about 54,000, so, you know, we have a little ways to go, Mr. Harris. The cost of living here, the cost of living index here in Swanee is 89.2%. In Florida is 1.1.6%, and in the nation, U.S., 100%. So, our dollar here goes a lot further than other places throughout Florida, so you can actually afford to live here in Swanee. Quickly, industry snapshot, manufacturing, which is still the largest sector in Swanee County, and that's a combination of food manufacturing and other manufacturing, employing about 2,100 workers. The larger, the next largest sector is retail trade, and then public administration. Over the next year, they are projecting employment to expand net by 127 jobs, and the fastest growing is expected to be construction with a 1.9% year-over-year. Then, the next one is retail, healthcare, and social assistance. And finally, our gross domestic product, the gross domestic product is the total value of goods and services produced by region, and in 2016, our GDP in Swanee County probably expanded by 5.8%. This follows growth of 2.4% in 15, and as of 16, basically, that is 980,503,000. So, basically, we are seeing some growth. The highest was in 2010, it was like 14.6%, and then it bottomed out. The last two years, we've been seeing increase in our GDP. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to general business, item 17, appointments to the Val Adjustment Board. I'll have to have two commissioners serve as regular members, and one as an alternate. This year, I was going to appoint Commissioner Fleming, Commissioner Richardson, and myself as the alternate. Is that all right with you, fellas?
Oh, me.
All right. Moving on to item, do what?
Citizen members.
It does.
Citizen members.
Oh, I didn't have it pulled out, this. The citizen member, again, this year will be representing the board, as an alternate will be Bo Hancock, and the actual sitting member will be Betty Braswell. Moving on to item 18, discuss possible board action, purchase of property for expansion of parks and rec activities. Turn attention to Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, several years ago, some of the commissioners asked me to look at a particular piece of property as a possibility of acquiring that for the county to expand operations associated with parks and recreation and some other things the county's involved in. The sale price of this property has come down substantially over the last few years. We're at a point now where the county is gonna need to make a decision. I've discussed with each of you individually, the terms of that contract, that will be kept confidential until an actual contract comes before the board for a decision. At that time, those terms will become public. At this point, I would ask for authorization to have the county attorney and myself work with an agent and the owners to place the terms in a contract that can be brought back to this board for an action.
All right, any questions for Mr. Harris?
The board wished to move forward with.
I make a motion to move forward with it.
Second.
All right, got a motion. How do you need the word, motion word? Is this, we're not?
You just need authorization to put the terms of the.
Terms of the contract.
The contract. The title insurance and the other things need to be put together to come back here for an executable contract by the board.
All right. That's what your motion includes?
That's what my motion includes.
Who was the second?
Me.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 19, discuss with possible board action, any issues associated with the water plant and the water, wastewater plant at I-75 and County Road 136. Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I don't really have a great deal that we can update right now, other than to say that we do have our responses back from the engineers. We're evaluating those once they're scored. I'm planning right now to bring a recommendation back to the board in your next meeting that will then allow us to begin negotiating prices. Like I said before, our plan is to procure the services of two different engineers, because we have a water plant and a sewer plant. With board concurrence at your next meeting on those selections, we can begin the negotiating process on actual prices. Outside of that, the, there's one other thing I've planned to go ahead and do on one of those sites, and that's the ground-penetrating radar on the locations that we've identified for some of the actual equipment and facilities. I don't need any action at this time, though.
All right, any questions on any of that from Mr. Harris?
No.
All right, moving on to item 20, additional agenda items. I didn't see any, we didn't have any, did we? Moving on to item 21, public comments and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, they would, make way to their podium, name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to administrator comments.
Just a quick comment. I don't know how many of you have recognized that we finished up the improvements at the courthouse. Just to refresh your memory, we had bid out those improvements. This is where those sections protruded off the walls. They were up off the ground, you know, anywhere from 16 inches to three or four feet, and they were cracking and starting to pull away from the building. So we had gone to bid, the high bid came in at 112,000, low bid was $91,695. I asked the board to let us just go in there, reject the bids, and conduct those repairs ourselves. That has been completed. Total cost on that was about $25,000, so we saved quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
I share that with you to say this, it's nice when we have the time to do that. We perform a lot of maintenance in other areas, our maintenance personnel do. I used, rather than our building maintenance people, I use some other maintenance personnel that we have to conduct most of that work, but we cannot do all of the things that we are trying to accomplish in the county. So we will be bidding out some of these other projects that we've all talked about, and that will happen soon, and then we'll bring those bids back to you for some action.
All right. Anything else? Moving on to board members, board members' requests and comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, if you have anything.
Mr. Hill?
The only thing I have, and I've mentioned it, Mr. Harris, but I said, I told this individual I would mention it at the meeting, Mr. Bo Speeran contacted me a week or so ago. He has an interest in selling his property over the old gas station, I think it is, over there. Don't know what the board thinks about that, but I told him I would mention it. I don't know a need, but.
Did you mention it?
I mentioned it. Yep.
So. Right off the top of my head, I mean, I, I guess it is close to the courthouse and the jail, but I don't know of a need. Do you, Mr. Harris?
No, sir. This isn't the first time that this proposal came to the board of county commissioners. This same proposal came to us a few years ago, and at that time, the board did not, could not identify a need for that property, and it was shortly after we settled, I guess, years' worth of negotiations on purchasing another piece of property from the family. So that opportunity was given to us to purchase this as well, and the board elected to not pursue that.
Is that the old?
Right up front there.
One that's a tinning place or a car tinning place or a cell phone place or something like that? Been a couple of things over the years. Every time I drive by it, I think about the parking that would huge, be a huge benefit in front of that courthouse if all of the property, including that, and I'm not saying that it should happen, I'm just simply saying that where that strip, the strips of buildings are as well, and think, man, it would solve some problems, but I don't think I'd want to pay it just to tear it down.
And the only other thing I have, and I know we've mentioned it in the past, but I just have to mention again, our employees out there at the county, all the way from the graders to the tree trimming crew, again, they just do a wonderful job. Anything I've ever asked them to do, they just go above and beyond, so kudos to them. They do a great job.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sessions?
Thursday night, they're gonna have the cares dinner out there at the IFS farm out there. It's a pretty big deal. A lot of local products grown or cooked and fed to people, and it's just a, it's a good time to go out there and, I guess, socialize and enjoy the fruits of the labor of the county. And you might meet somebody like run of the governor or something, too, you know, when you're out there. It's at 6:00 on Thursday.
Thanks, sir.
I only have one thing. It's been several months ago, I was contacted by a gentleman over in, I believe in Columbia County named Gene McNeil. He takes a bunch of veterans fishing, and he uses, not out in a boat, he takes them to wheelchair-accessible boat ramps. And one of the only lakes around that's accessible by wheelchair is Swanee Lake, and so I just wanted to give hats off to the road department. Me and Mr. Harris met out there with FWC and gave them a quote on what we thought it would take Millens to get that, where they could access the wheelchair-accessible, brand-new dock with a slab, but erosion had messed up the road so bad, they couldn't get the van down there. Anderson Columbia donated, I don't know, four or five, what, six loads of Millens, and then Public Works went out there, graded the road off and put the Millens down. So now the guy can, he brings about 10 or 12 veterans at a time, disabled veterans fishing, so hats off to Public Works. How about Mr. Gene McNeil? He has worked very hard on this over the past several months to bring FWC, Anderson Columbia, and Swanee County together to pull it off. So just thank you to all the players that made that possible. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing that Mr. Sessions reminded me of Thursday. Folks, Thursday is the National Day of Prayer, where it's, we recognize National Day of Prayer here, and people will be gathering around a pole, both in Branford in the evening, of course, that's gonna conflict with the cares dinner, but also here in the afternoon at the Swanee County courthouse. I don't know about you, but I believe that our nation is never too good for a little prayer. So if you, if you're Christian and you believe in it, meet, fill the front lawn of that courthouse up, and let people know that we're praying for our nation.
Thanks, sir. Just need to move to adjourn. Thank you, fellas.